It's my honor to welcome everybody to the Natrona County County Commissioner Candidate Forum. And I want to thank our candidates for being here and also for filling out their positions on Vote 411. That is our online voter guide with the League of Women Voters. My name's Kylie McCormick and I'm the president of our Casper chapter of the League of Women Voters. And it's an honor to put this forum on in conjunction with the Natrona County Library, who gives us this wonderful space to be able to do this and find out more about you and your positions. If you're interested in the League, definitely come check us out. We've got some pamphlets in the back and we've got a sign up sheet. And if you want to promote that voter education and being able to find out more about these candidates, we have some great coasters in the back with a QR code. And we also have some yard signs that you're welcome to take home and put up in your yard to promote Vote 411. I'm going to let our wonderful moderators, Joanne True and Beth Worthing, describe the rules for the evening. But I will say that we, the questions tonight have been put together by the League of Women Voters. We're a nonpartisan organization, so we try not to do any gotcha questions. And we love to hear from the public and get different perspectives. So in the back, there are these note cards. There's some pins back there. I'll be sitting in the back and just fill out whatever questions you might have. Hand it to me and I'll bring it up here to the moderators. And with that, I'll turn it over to Joanne and Beth. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Kylie. So for the format tonight, the candidates will each have a minute and a half to introduce themselves. And then we'll go into the questions. We have both long form questions and short answer questions. The long form questions, you'll get a minute each to respond to those. And then those short form questions, about 30 seconds. We joke that you can fit it all into one sentence. And we'll have our librarian here, Betsy, judge whether it's actually a sentence or not. So please, no dangling participles. Don't feel that you need to take all of that time. You don't have to stretch your answer out in order to fill that time. That would leave more time for questions if we're efficient in answering our questions. And we're going to kind of mix it up in terms of a couple of long form and then maybe a short form and then a couple of long form. We really don't go by any specific structure. We just want to make sure that we get to as many questions that are relevant to the candidates for the county commission as possible. Again, we encourage the audience to ask those questions on the cards and give them to Kylie. And Kylie can bring them up here and we'll be able to work those in as we moderate tonight's forum. And then at the end, we're going to leave time for you to each have one minute as a closing statement, just to address anything that you feel like you'd like to address and closing remarks. So, any questions? Okay. Oh, Betsy is our timekeeper. So she will hold up a yellow card when your time is halfway through. She will hold up a red card when your time is over. And we'll go ahead when she holds up that card. We will monitor and say, "Thank you very much," and we can move on to the next candidate. We'll start with the first question will be at the beginning of this line of candidates with Mr. Bertollio, and then we'll rotate. So that next first question will go to Mr. Coats, that next first question to Mr. Youngberg, et cetera. Am I missing anything? Nope, I think that's it. All right, then we're going to kick it off with Mr. Bertollio. And introductions for the candidates. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for giving us this opportunity for the public to actually see us. I mean, it's pretty hard in this day and age, especially for us older people. We don't do Instagram and all the other things to get our faces out there, so thank you. I am Paul Bertollio. I've decided to run again. I looked at the, what the commission was going to lose in way of experience and felt like I could actually step in and provide that expertise. I served over sixteen and a half years on the Casper City Council, five and a half years on the county commission, was the mayor of Casper three times, the chair the last two years on the county commission. I bring a wealth of experience, not only at the local level, but at the state level in dealing with broad, complex issues. I've got a very broad background on budgeting. And I bring a lot of leadership skills. I've been, I was an independent oil and gas man for past thirty years and have recently retired. So I have plenty of time to spend for the county commission. So thank you.
If I could interrupt, Mr. Coats. For Mr. Simpson, we are doing a minute and a half introduction. And we're just going to go down the line, just so. Okay, great.
Sorry, I'm late.
No worries.
All right, so I'm Casey Coats. I am a lifelong resident of Natrona County. I decided to run partially because of the gravel pit issue. And then that kind of spiraled into researching a little bit about, more about what the county commission does and seeing that I could make a positive difference for my family, my neighbors, my friends. So I have a wealth of government experience. I've spent more than a decade in government on operations and in the line level. So I started out in government as a police officer. Spent some time doing that, went through different ranks there, different administrative levels there. And attended the Northwestern School of Police Staff in Command. That's where I kind of learned the importance of fiscal responsibility and the realisms of leadership. Beyond that, I attended Casper College, got an associate's degree there, a bachelor's degree from Liberty University in criminal justice. I have a master's degree in applied psychology and a graduate study certificate in public administration. On my day to day, I manage the public utilities department for the city of Mills. And other than that, I chase three kids around the family ranch. So it's nice to meet you all.
My name is Arthur Youngberg. I actually work at Natrona County Road and Bridge. I've been there for almost four years. And I also worked at a plumbing company here in Casper. Before that, I spent almost twenty years at Antelope Coal. That's a long drive. It's a hundred and fifteen miles one way. And it was, it was a long twenty years, but it was worth it. Like I don't know a lot of things. I actually grew up in Saratoga, Wyoming, graduated with thirty-three kids. And, well, there's not many people in this room, so. I went to Wyotech and graduated in diesel technology. And most of my experience has been hands-on. I don't know a lot about the government, but I know we have the best system because anybody can run and everybody should try to run, and it's not that easy. So everybody who's up here, I'm glad they came up here and came out to run because it's hard being up here in front of people, so that's why.
My name's Matt Keating, and I, again, I'm grateful for the opportunity to sit up here before you guys today. I appreciate it. So twenty-five years as a fireman, and I did that because I believe in service. I believe, if you're going to know me, I think I can surmise it by very briefly telling you that I love God, my wife, and my kids, and my country. Government is important. And do we, I did fourteen years as a county commissioner. I've done four years as a county assessor. And I think that gives me a unique skill set, not understanding just only the county commission, but also our property tax system and how it works. I'm actually sitting here because in twenty-two, the legislature gave the county commissioners the authority, the ability to implement and imitate the property tax refund program. Part of that conversation was this. They, the state and local assessed had risen enough. For an example, we've been in our house twenty-five years and our property taxes have tripled, right? So I told the county commissioner, I said, "You can lower your tax rate from twelve to eight point eight and you'll receive the same revenue that you got last year, but it remains at its county max, its statutory max at twelve." And there are a number of people in Natrona County that are living on twelve-hundred, nine-hundred, or less in social security a month, and they can't afford their property tax bill. There are some county commissioners that are, that are talking about, my time is up?
We'll come back to that issue. No, no worries.
All right, my name is Dave North, and I'm currently a sitting county commissioner. Been on the commission for three and a half years now. And I have a pretty broad background. I've been in, I moved to Casper in thirty-eight years ago to work for the game and fish department, worked for them for thirteen years. And then I jumped off and went into the private sector, which was originally my, kind of my game plan all along was to get that experience so that I could get into the private sector. I've had my own business, I've had one business, my own business for thirty years, thirty-two years now. I've had another one for twenty-three years. And then I've also put up Hay West of Town, so I'm involved with our agricultural section as well. And I've been doing that for several years. God, family, and country are the order, and I'm a strong believer in that. And I believe in our First Amendment very strongly. I believe in our Second Amendment very strongly. And I believe that it's good that we have the opportunity to converse with each other and find out what's really important. And one of the biggest things that I believe that is important as county commissioner is being available to your constituents. I answer my phone. If I miss my phone call, I call you back. If I get an email, I respond, and I respond to every one of them. So I think that's something that's very important that we do.
Thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Rosemary Saban. Property taxes got me involved in politics two years ago. I went to the county commission meetings. I didn't like what I was being told, that our elected leadership had no control. So I took it upon myself to start a petition. I collected one thousand eight hundred twenty-five signatures. Myself and my representative, Bill Alamand, took that petition to the interim revenue committee in Sheridan, Wyoming. I followed that to Casper, Wyoming, and testified, and to Cheyenne. I recently attended another revenue committee meeting here, I think it was two months ago. I testified several times for Rocky Mountain power rate increases, testified at the slid board meeting against the gravel mine. I've been very active for the last year and a half. And this is a complicated, our government is very complicated. It's a machine. There's a lot of, lot of things that need changed here in this county. And I believe in the people, by the people, for the people.
Thank you. My name's Terry Wingarder. I think I have deja vu because I've been here before, if I remember right. How many times? I don't know. But anyway, there was, my dad moved here when I was three years old. I was a toddler when we moved here. There was, I have eight brothers and sisters. There was, I was, like I said, I was three. Most of the kids were born here in Casper. My dad was in the oil and gas business. He ran a gas station, and that's oil and gas. And believe you me, I worked around that gas station. I remember washing cars, and to this day, I still remember Dad saying, "Turn that radio down." But anyway, the station we had was right across the street from the courthouse. It used to be a Sinclair station. But anyway, I've been in and out of the county commission. The last time I was a county commissioner was ten years ago. I've still been going to all the meetings, not all of them, let's say ninety percent of them. Sometimes I go to the afternoon meetings, the work sessions. Other times, I go to the evening meetings. I've always loved government. I've, all of us kids were raised here in Casper, went to Casper schools, St. Anthony's School, and then Dean Morgan, then, then we went up to Casper College. And I'm currently on several boards around town, the RSVP program, Kiwanis Club, city planning, the Old Yellowstone District Board, Skyline Towers. Well, I guess my time's up, sorry.
Hello, Kurt Simpson. I first entered this little political game two years ago. Tried to keep Steve Freo from getting his position. Now I see he's not running. Only other involvement in politics was a three-year stint on the Natrona County Predator Management Board. We dealt with the financial side of it, trying to allocate the money properly to get the job done as best we could. Also, I grew up, I was born and raised here. And I spent the early years in the oil field, various different jobs, mostly truck driving in one form or another. Then I finally got into retail and spent thirty years in that, here in town. And I appreciate the League of Women Voters having us here tonight. Thank you very much. Thank you for all the people that have showed up. And hopefully, we'll see you in November.
Thank you. This next question is for Mr. Coats. Taxes cover the cost of general government services, goods, and facilities that a person is unable to cover individually. With that said, what is the role of government, in your opinion?
Short or long form?
I'm sorry, this is a long form. A minute.
So taxes, to some extent, regardless how they're derived, do primarily fund services that are necessities for the operation of government and in and of itself, I guess I would say, you know, services that are relied upon. You know, these, these general fund type things are police services, fire services, and, you know, to some extent, infrastructure services. I think that, I lost my train of thought there briefly. Can I get a quick part of the question?
Sure. What is the role of government, given the tax, the comment about taxes?
Perfect. So the role of government, I guess, in short order, is to be a proper steward of those funds that are derived from taxes and to ensure that those taxes are properly spent for maximum value.
So I would say the role of government should be law and order and roads and bridges, and other than that, get out of the way because they, they don't do things right. And the private sector does it a lot better. Your taxes would be way better spent on other things instead of all the other things it does. So police departments, road and bridges, and law and order, that's about it.
So the, we talked, we talked about experience on the county commission. I think that's very important. Fourteen years as a county commissioner and four years as a county assessor gives me the insight and expertise, a unique skill set, to not just understand the system, but the ins and outs of it and how it works. And that's really very important. It's time the Natrona County Commission got back to the basics, evaluate what they're spending money on. And then if it's not statutorily mandated, it needs to be justified or it needs to be removed from the budget. Part of the, part of the conversation was that the county commission spent eight hundred eighty thousand dollars to try to keep Delta here for a time. And they could have spent fifty-nine thousand dollars less, eight hundred twenty-one thousand dollars, to provide the property tax relief for those in our community that need it in lieu of, you know, trying to keep an airline here for six months. So it's, those are really disposable funds that the county commission shouldn't have been expanding and should have been giving back to people.
The role of government, we have two types. We have what's statutorily required by the state that we have to take care of. And then we have other areas, other departments and everything else that we also have to take care of. Going through the budget, every year it changes. We look at that, and we have to have a balanced budget according to the county commission, you know, according to the statute. And so what you have to do is you have to weigh the pros and cons on things. I don't agree with everything that has been passed as far as the commission goes, but you've got to remember, there's five commissioners. And your vote doesn't necessarily stand alone. So you may be outvoted. So even if you don't feel the same way as everybody else, it's what the majority goes with. And, but there are certain things that we have to take care of. And roads and bridges, law enforcement, there, I mean, there's a whole variety of them that are set up. But we also have several different departments and everything else.
The role of government is prudent spending of the people's tax dollars. It's to fund roads and bridges, it's to fund the government's essential, essential needs, and some recreation that does bring community together. We're talking about the property taxes. Seventy-three percent of our property taxes is funding public schools. Roughly twenty-eight percent is funding the general budget. I think there's room for some improvement there and some reduction because, as we all know, Wyoming saw a surplus in their budget from the increase in property taxes. And if I'm allowed later to discuss that, it was in nineteen eighty-eight that that started. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You know, there's twenty-three counties in the state, and the twenty-three counties are set up to actually help out the state because the state can't do all the projects that the counties can. They don't have time or the money or the effort to do it. By state statutes, you've got to take care of the courthouse first. Everybody in the courthouse, the assessor, the treasurer, the sheriff, the clerk, clerk of court, and the coroner. And then once you get, you pay their employees and all that. And once you get done with them, then you can go out, the library, the fair board, the fairgrounds, that is, the airport, although they do have some money coming in. You know, like the airport has landing fees. And we just got done with the figuring rodeo and they got some money from the carnival and stuff like that. But the role of government is, it's really to watch the people's money. Am I done?
The role of government is to, should be to use the people's money judiciously. You can't just be frittering it away on things that you choose. The obvious things that you have to take care of, and the roads, bridges, infrastructure in general, law enforcement, all of those things, the fire protection in general. And of course, schools have been mentioned. One of the things about the money that we spend on schools, we don't think we're quite getting the education we're paying for. Perhaps we should try and figure out a way to cut back on that, particularly on the administrative side. Seems to me that we've done way too much administration compared to the quality of the education we're getting. I don't know. Thank you.
I believe the role of government is create the environment that the citizens want to live in. So that starts with public safety and a strong infrastructure. The role of the elected is to see that those tax dollars are effectively spent. And that means oversight on your managers, creating an environment that has, your employees want to work in, that they're adequately paid because you can't have an effective government without a workforce that supports it. So I believe that the challenge is, no matter how much tax dollars comes in, there's always more wants. It's the, it's the ability to take those wants that are past what your necessities are and prioritize them because there's always somebody that wants something from government. To use those dollars effectively, you have to learn to say no.
Okay, thank you. The next question is going to be another long form question. And we are going to start with Mr. Youngberg. And that is, "Do you support the current tax assessment appeals process and why? If not, what changes would you support to improve that process?"
Can you say that again?
Absolutely. Do you support the current tax assessment appeals process and why, or why not? If not, what changes would you support to improve that process?
Okay, so I do not support it the way it is. I mean, I went down there and fought over my property taxes because I live close to Wolf Creek. And their subdivision is quite a bit different than the one I live in, which is just across the street. So we were getting charged Wolf Creek prices in a Walmart house. So yeah, it's, it's not good. But I think a lot of it has to go to the state level. That's what I'm understanding. But also, we need to talk to people and see why they're charging us. It's almost like a capital gains. You go buy a house, you're a young couple, you know what your payment's going to be. That includes your property taxes and that stuff. Well, five years later, we have a bunch of people that didn't do the right thing in government, and now we're getting three times the property taxes. How are they supposed to afford it when their bills didn't go up? We've got to put the right people in office. Maybe there's something we can do with our attorney here. I don't know. I'm not an attorney, but there's got to be something they can do.
Well, I, the system that we have in place today is actually a good one. The issue that we have with it, it's misunderstood. I've got to really go to give kudos to the gentleman to my right who's a diesel mechanic. I would have no right on working on your diesel engine because I don't know how it works. But the process that we have in the appeal process, if it's done correctly, is a good one as long as it's done fair and equitably across the board. As long as you have an understanding and a skill set to implement it correctly, then the appeal process is good. But when you have appeals and, and questions come before the county commission, who are the Board of Equalization, they have, I know, they've had quite a bit of experience, I guess, with appeals. But it's still, it's taking just a basic one-on-one class on how the process works. And they haven't really done, taken that level, but yet they sit in judgment on, thank you.
I don't like the appeals process we have right now. It's broken for several reasons. One, if the taxpayer doesn't bring something forth or the assessor doesn't bring something forth, if there's something else, the county commissioners cannot even present that as evidence in the case. It has to be presented. A lot, most of the time, the taxpayers don't even know what they're required to do and what they need to bring before us for an appeal. That part needs to change. We need to, we had it set up where we could not even look at some of the locations on some of the computer programs that we had because that wasn't available to the taxpayer. That's wrong. So we, we need to work through this, but it needs to change. And the commissioners need to have a little bit more latitude in how they do things and, and what they're presenting and what they can present to the taxpayer for the taxpayer's benefit. That's what we're supposed to be there for, is for the taxpayers. The assessor is supposed to be there for the collection of the taxes and the assessment.
No, I don't like it. The Board of County Commissioners serves as the local Board of Equalization. The State Board of Equalization has been deferred an enormous amount of power by our legislation. In nineteen eighty-eight, they changed, there was a constitutional amendment that changed the verbiage in our constitution to say fair market value. Since then, it's been a spiral. And based on the mass appraisal system and the KAMA system, that's what's got us to this point right now. Constitutionally, we were bound right now as county commissioners, the board is, to, to do as, as is stated, as they do right now. But that's a process that needs to change because it's the state giving, giving authority to a board that is not elected by the people. It's, it's another bureaucracy.
It's called home rule. The State of Wyoming, in my opinion, needs to give the counties a little bit more leeway to let them run their own assessments. Yes, I realize the state has the Board of Equalization. And I'm not saying they shouldn't be involved, but they should give the state, the counties, a little bit more room to do their own thing. The other day, I was, I was walking down the street. I happened to talk to somebody and they, they live in a house that's maybe forty years old. And there's a new housing development going right across the street. And because of that, their taxes went up over fifty percent. And I'm sure you've all heard stories where taxes went up higher than that. So I think the State of Wyoming just needs to give the counties a little bit more leeway. And it's called the home rule. I'm all about.
Well, in regards to the appeals process, it seems to me that it's far too complicated. It should be simplified. Not exactly sure how to get that done. Part of the problem would be with, on the state level. We'll have, I'll have to look a little further into that and talk with the legislator to see what we can get accomplished on that end. But the appeals process should not be that hard for process should not be that hard for the taxpayer per se. The Board of County Commissioners is all right being the final say on it, but it doesn't need to be more complicated for them either. It needs to be simplified both on both ends for their decision making and for the taxpayers to present their case. Thank you.
I do not like the current way it's set up, primarily because it gives the taxpayer the unreal, the expectation that something is going to be done, and it's not. There is no power granted to the county commissioners to make a change. All we can do, and I can state this unequivocally, the hundreds of hours I sat through Board of Equalization hearings, I have a pretty good idea how it works now. And I have found that about the best we can do is help point out things that they need to look at. And I've done it with some other people. Before they go talk to the assessor, ask these questions. And it has helped. The challenge gets to be the average taxpayer just doesn't know how to do it. And if the rules were a little bit clearer, I think that we would not see equalization hearings. People would understand why their taxes are where they are. There needs to be rules changed, though.
So large I'm in agreement. I don't think the current system is truly navigable to the average taxpayer. I've seen on several occasions, individuals go through the process and kind of get, you know, stuck in the mire of, you know, different, this portion of your property is commercial, this portion of your property is residential. That's just a confusing place to be as a taxpayer. And, you know, coming in front of the Board of Equalization and at the county level, it may lead to some answers. It may lead to more questions. Ultimately, the assessment process, in my opinion, is where things need to be adjusted. And that's where maybe the county commission should really focus in bringing that, you know, assessment in line and making sure that the appropriate taxes are levied.
Thank you. The next question is for candidate Keating. This is a 30 second question and/or one sentence question. It can be a long, long run on question or sentence, but 30 seconds. What is the public facility or service that you most appreciate in Netrota County?
Oh, Fire Department, absolutely. And those guys are the best. I was down in Cheyenne working with a gentleman who was a firefighter, a cop for more than 40 years. We're going up an elevator and he said, so if we get in trouble, we're gonna call the Fire Department? And I said, well, a cop's not gonna be any help. He literally was stuck in the elevator that day. And I have video of him, of the Fire Department rescuing the cop out of the elevators.
More than one question, but I love it. Mr. North.
After being the Fire Chief in Mills, I'm gonna have to agree with that as far as the top one. Because I think the Fire Department does more for the community across the board. I'm not saying the others aren't important, but I think they do more community service overall than a lot of the other agencies do.
I kind of have to agree. Maybe I have a little biased opinion because my brother's a firefighter. But I do give a big shout out to the emergency service, other services, like the Sheriff's Department.
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. The question is, what is the public facility or service that you most appreciate in Netrota County?
Well, certainly, I appreciate the volunteers on top of Casper Mountain. I notice they've been very busy lately, the last couple of days, or the last week. There's been several lightning strikes up there. And I being, I didn't mention this before, but I was a firefighter for five years with the government. Five of, three of those years, I was crew boss. So I'm very familiar with firefighting. And I remember when Matt was a firefighter, I even went and took the, what do you call that?
Thank you. Sorry.
There you go again.
That's right. Mr. Simpson.
Thank you. I'm afraid I'm just pretty much gonna have to agree with everybody so far. Firefighters are right there for pretty much everyone, particularly the rural firefighters, the wildfire management. It seems like they're doing a very good job so far of keeping us from having one get away from us. So thanks to them, and I agree. Thanks to the other, the law enforcement side also. But firefighters are right there. Thank you.
Little brevity. You're asking me which daughter I like the best. Okay. Obviously, I will always reiterate, anything to do with public safety, they have my deepest appreciation. But we're, an organization's only as strong as its weakest link. And for example, the people that pick up your garbage, no one ever thinks twice about them. But can you imagine your community without garbage service? So only as strong as our weakest link.
So, you know, as a police officer, I really enjoy police officers and I really enjoy firefighters. But I'm also a public works guy. And one of my favorite services absolutely has to do with public works, infrastructure maintenance. And in the county, you respect Roden Bridge because without good Roden Bridges, law enforcement doesn't, and Fire have a hard time getting where they need to go.
Okay, I'm gonna be super biased. Snowplow drivers. A guy from NASA told me it was the most dangerous job you can have. 67 times a snowplow driver got hit in three years. We pay him $20 an hour. We ask him to get up at four in the morning and go out when no other people do. They're super good people.
Okay, we're gonna do another long form question. And we're gonna start with Mr. North. And the question is, would you support issuing a conditional use permit for Prism Logistics' proposed gravel mine?
I can't answer that question because it's gonna be coming before the commission. And what I can tell you is that a conditional use permit requires, it has seven specific requirements that are associated with that. And each one of those requirements has to be met, or else a conditional use permit cannot be granted. And we have not got that before us. So I cannot speculate on what it's going to do or what's going to be there. And so I can't answer that as far as what that goes. And it is gonna be coming before us soon. But since I have a little bit of time, if I do want to say, I do support all of our agencies that make the county run.
Are you afraid of them coming after you later? Like Dave said, there's seven criteria. From what I see, they don't mean it. But I'm not a commissioner and I can't answer that. I would, however, support our commission revising that zoning resolution rewrite that allowed that to happen prior to the rewrite on December 20th, 2022, when it was adopted without 45 days' notice and worked on up to 15, 20 minutes beforehand. I think it needs to be rescinded or that section revised to put it back to non-permissible.
No, let's put it this way. I've been to just about all those meetings about the gravel pit on the foot of the mountain. I would assume that's what you're talking about. We're all talking about. And I've made myself clear. I've heard both sides. And I will not support a conditional use permit. I would hope things could be worked out so both sides are happy in this situation. That's all I have to say about it. I just wish that this thing wouldn't have happened the way it did. But this is a very windy city, and there's a lot of houses out there. And there's, we need to work it out.
With the current amount of information that I have on it, I'm going to say that I would not support that gravel pit going in on the face of our mountain. I don't think that's really the correct place for it. There are an awful lot of things involved in this, a lot of reasons why it shouldn't be done there. Yeah, I don't think I can support that. Thank you.
Based on what I know right now, I would probably not support a conditional use permit. And I caveat that, I have not seen the permit. I have not followed, I don't know the details of what they're proposing. But what I have been told, I believe that there are at least two, if not three grounds to not give them a conditional use permit. You have to be able to quantify or at least be very accurate when you do one of these because they can take you to court. We had one on the wind turbines out north. They met every requirement we put in front of them. If we would have not given them the conditional use permit, they would have walked across the street, filed in court, and won. Has to have a strong case. There are at least three grounds that I believe that can be clearly identified and which would mean that you cannot grant a conditional use permit.
So the beauty of taking a semi-neutral stance early on in this discussion about the gravel pit is that you get to really analyze both sides. You know, I have, you know, skin in the game up there. And so I got to look at a lot of, you know, the personal side of things. And, you know, I believe that you can take a professional and a personal stance on things. And so personally, I do not support it. It's not the right place for it. There's many other places. And it impacts a lot of people, not just the local residents, but it impacts Casper. It impacts Netrota County in a major way. On the professional side of things, with the conditional use permit, there are seven criteria. And some of those things are gonna be a heavy lift to overcome. Some of those things, you know, Prism Logistics may be able to adequately work their way through. But there's some things I just don't think that they're going to be able to. Thank you.
So I have my Foreman's mining license from the state of Wyoming, so I know a little bit about mining. There's a lot of things that I need to see before I would support it. I mean, there's a ground plan. There's all kinds of things that go into mining. I grew up in Saratoga, so obviously Hannah. The coolest thing about Hannah, it was built in a mine, basically. The coolest thing was seeing the dry line. There's a lot of problems with Coates Road and trying to get into that intersection. And being a snowplow driver, I know exactly what that's gonna entail. I've had to back up that road before sanding all the way up. So there's gonna have to be stoplights. There's so many things with that that's gonna have to be done. And I went out there and looked at it. And I'm trying to figure out what they're trying to get. Is there that much gravel? Are they gonna shoot and blast? What kind of trucks are they gonna use? I mean, shovels? There's a lot of stuff that they don't know that I haven't heard, so.
So I was just getting back from dinner with my wife and my son-in-law called and asked if he could marry my daughter. And I told him no. My wife said, you can't tell a no. I'm thinking, well, then, why did he ask? I was the only one on the county commission for the wind turbines up by Coal Creek that said no. And I'm thinking, well, if no wasn't an answer, well, then why are they asking me? Would I support this gravel pit? No, I think for several reasons. One, it would scar the front of Casper Mountain. The wind that it travels across the front of Casper Mountain, I can't imagine the dirt and the dust that would blow into people's homes. And there's still that unknown question that I understand about the potential effects on the wells. So I'm a no.
Okay, our next question, and this will be for Ms. Vaughn. And it's a one minute question. Leadership at the county level is challenging without an administrative head. So these responsibilities have historically fallen on the county attorney or on commissioners themselves. What are your thoughts on staffing a position for this, these roles? And if not staffing a position, what other recommendations do you have?
I don't know that specifically, as an individual staff position is necessary. I think that we have a body that, of people, that should be the best resource that we have for questions that we have is the people. I think if we get out and solicit their response and their ideas, that we can be pretty powerful. It is a government of the people, by the people, for the people. Thank you.
The other day, I was putting up a sign and one of the other candidates came up to me and we was talking. We always have a friendly talk. And he said, you know, Terry, this is not a good time to be on the county commission. And I thought to myself later, there's never a good time to be on the county commission. You don't go there for parties and gains. There's a lot of work as a county commissioner. And do we need to, do we, I'm not we, I hope to be, but I mean, do they need a county manager? Well, it's been brought up a time or two, but I don't think it's necessary. If there are five county commissioners, just do their homework. It's a job. It's a tough job. And if you just do your homework and be polite to people and listen to both sides, you're not gonna, you know, you're gonna make some enemies. Because no matter what side you, however you vote, there's always the other side that doesn't like it. But no, I don't think we need another employee.
Well, I understand that we're really tight on the budget. I don't know why in the world would want to add another position to have to pay for. You put somebody in a position, you have to pay for that. And it's not just this week or next week. It's basically permanent. We do not need another individual needing another draw on our budget that's already tight. Nobody's happy about the property taxes as it is. So how are you gonna pay for that new position? Don't think so.
Well, serving as the chair for two years, I can tell it's an entirely different perspective than just being just a commissioner. The chair is the administrator. You deal with all kinds of little things, from the garage doors not opening in the Hall of Justice or having a problem, to all kinds of crazy stuff. We relied on the county attorney to do a lot of that, which took all his time away from being the county attorney. I'm torn on it. When times are just kind of normal, you really don't need one. But there are times when there are so many things going on. And the commissioners meet twice a month as a group. Yes, we can call special meetings, but to be very effective, somebody really does need to have a hands-on, day-to-day dealing with budget matters, personnel issues, and just all kinds of crazy things that go on in the county. So it's worth exploring. I was always hesitant due to the financial ramifications.
So you get into the, you know, politics in the county commission, you know, to administrate and operate the county. That is the duties of a commissioner. So there's five of them. You know, yes, it's a heavy load. And, you know, just as Mr. Petolio said, it is going to be a lot of work for any particular chairman. But I am a firm believer in, you know, trusting the staff you have. You have department heads. And, you know, department heads assist in that heavy lift. That is the bureaucratic action that government is allowed to take. And if you appoint good people, then you should expect good results. If you don't get good results, then you make the necessary changes and move on. Thank you.
Okay, so I would say absolutely not. We don't need another person. We gotta stop hiring people to do this, do that. The county commission probably shouldn't meet as much as they do. State legislation gets 30 days, period. You don't get it done, you don't get it done. Well, then they're not screwing anything else up when they're not there. That's my opinion. I mean, it might not be popular, and maybe it's not valid, but get government out of things.
My time on the county commission was always, I have good relationships with the managers that manage the department heads. And if you don't have a good manager managing that department, well, you need to find one that is. Netrota County's different than, I mean, City Council has managers or managers. I can't say that three times fast, Dave. So yeah, so, but the county's unique in that we have five full-time elected officials who can be autonomous if they so choose to. So I mean, it would be a difficult ask for somebody to try and manage those guys.
No, I don't believe that we need an administrator. I contact and I talk to every one of our department heads on a regular basis so I can find out what their needs are and when they need them. And that way, and they call me at night. I talk to them at night. I call them on weekends, same thing. I understand that there are times that you would like to have somebody else kind of take the heat off of you. But bottom line is, that's what we're elected to do. We don't have that many department heads. And you do need to put faith in the department heads you have, rely on what their judgment is. And if they can't take care of the job, then that's when you address that issue. But I do believe that as the commissioners, especially with five of us, that we need But I do believe that as the commissioners, especially with five of us, that we need to have that communication with our department heads. We all need to know what's going on because they have five bosses. And that's the big thing. And that's the reason why that communication is so important and why we need to have that. And we need to, and I believe that's something that has to be done with an administrator. We would lose that.
Okay, thank you. Then we're starting to get some questions from the audience. So the next question starts with Mr. Wingeter. This is a short question, so 30 seconds, Mr. Wingeter. What will you do to maintain and improve the Natrona County archery range?
Well, it's been a while since I've been up there, but I certainly, I know when I was a county commissioner, it was always...
I think your microphone needs to come on and we'll restart the time.
It's been a while since I've been up to the archery range, but when I was a county commissioner, the big problem was the road leading into the archery range. That's certainly something that I'd take care of. I don't know if it's been taken care of or not. But I certainly, you know, we have so many good recreation sites on the mountain. I know you're talking about the archery range now, and all I can remember when I was there was the road. And there was a little problem, I think, with the next-door neighbor, if I remember it correctly, but I think that's straightened out now.
Well, sadly, I have to go with Terry on that one. I have not been to the archery range and I don't remember. But access to it would be critical. It should not be a problem to get there. Also, you would want to make sure that you have fire mitigation around it so it doesn't wind up getting consumed if something, God forbid, should happen. But mainly access and easy, easy access. Thank you.
I would agree that I think the first challenge is keeping the road open. I think that's going to be the biggest challenge on the mountain, is keeping roads open. We're going to start seeing barbed wire fences everywhere and people saying, "You can't go this way." So that, and then also having a, you know, we've talked about bear trap shelters, coming up with a consistent plan that kind of melds the natural scenery and has some, some type of shelters up there so that families can go up there.
So I think you're going to hear a lot of the same with this, but absolutely access and, you know, I really like the idea of facilities up there to make it more usable, more user-friendly, not just, you know, specifically for, you know, seasoned archers, but new archers. Needs to be some, a place for, you know, Natrona County residents to go, you know, explore the great outdoors and I would support making sure that, you know, the archery range is a steadfast option for that.
Okay, here I go again. I wouldn't do anything. I've been up there, I think it's great, but I think a private company, can we lease it to a private company? Can they do something better with it? And can we get the government out of it?
Yeah, well done. I absolutely agree. What I would do is I would invite them into a county commissioner meeting and sit down in kind of a roundtable discussion and ask the people that are utilizing it how we can support them at no cost and help them use a facility as they see fit.
Right now, we have a wonderful opportunity because we have the outdoor recreation grants. They're going to be coming up with the trust. Those are, that's funding that's going to be continual and you can apply for those different grants. The county can apply for some of that to make the improvements up there, to make it more usable for everybody and actually make that. We just discussed this in the statewide shooting complex. That was one of the things that they were specifically looking for, is somewhere that they could use archery. So the state's already behind this. They're already looking at some of these areas and I think we need to do the most we can for our county.
I support these sorts of things secondary to the roads and infrastructure if there's a remaining amount in the budget. But offhand, I can think that something that concerns me is that the state, there was a land swap done on Hat Six. I don't know if you're all aware. When I first moved down here, there was a rock formation there and the Boy Scouts used that for an archery target backdrop. And so I think the county needs to have a little more authority in the lands within the county against the state.
Thank you. The next question is a long form, so you have a minute to answer this, and it will be for Mr. Simpson. The question is, "The county has hundreds of thousands of dollars in opioid settlement money. Currently, not a single dollar has been spent. What would you do with that money?"
I believe the first thing I would do is look into the, get with the health department and see what I could do with the, on the mental health side of it. Use, abuse of any drug is generally, in my opinion, emotional or mental instability of some kind. Addiction is definitely a disease, so we definitely have to work with the health department on that and see what we could do to improve the circumstances in general.
First thing I do is I get with the city because they also have a large sum. Sounds like a lot, doesn't go very far. I think the key is to, is to find the professionals that know how to deal with this, take it out of government. This is not a role of government. Dealing with opioid addiction is something that is a challenge that is beyond the scope of any government. I think the challenge is to find that right group or create a group that has that skillset and can actually bring results to the issue.
So the opioid crisis isn't something that we're going to solve by just throwing large, large dollar amounts at it. That's something that's been going on for a long time with our government and trying to control the stem, to stem the flow of drugs and the use of drugs. So my thoughts are that that money could be funneled into, you know, the appropriate government agencies that, you know, can have some kind of an impact on that. Some of these things could go to addressing mental health holds and offsetting some of the cost of that. Some of this funding could even go into prevention efforts, which I think, you know, an ounce of prevention is worth a, you know, a pound of gear to some extent, so, thank you.
So what I'd like to see done with it is take that money, invest it, use the investment to pay for healthcare prob, or healthcare for county employees that we have to provide anyway, and use that as part of the money to supplement income for it, so we're not all charged for it.
25 years as a fireman, the majority of that was a medic, which meant cardiac meds and manual D-Fib, that kind of thing. I would, I would do my best to ensure that Narcan was easily accessed by all emergency services and then education.
Right now, our judges are sending some of our youth to places like YCC instead of sending them to detention center. I think that's a great thing, but this is something that, that money can be utilized for that, to keep those kids from being involved with drugs, being exposed to it, and give them a pathway out of that situation so that they can, you know, have a better situation that has family situation that they're dealing with. That's one thing. I do believe that the health professionals are the ones that need to deal with that. I am not a health professional in that format and I'm not going to pretend to be one, so that, that's, that's what I think we should do though, is turn that over to the people that, that know what they're doing to make sure that we can get the most pain for the buck.
I really don't have a good answer on that because I have personal opinions on drug abuse. I do believe strongly in the DARE program because I was exposed to that early on. So that's one potential thing, but again, this is something I think we should solicit of the people what they want. But I think that drug use is not the role of government and I think it's a choice. Nobody forces anybody to use drugs.
I agree with that. No one forces anybody, but sometimes it's forced upon you unfortunately because some doctors, not purposely, give you too much pain medicine or give you too much of this or too much of that, and before long, you're addicted. I had a brother that was addicted like that. I think in all of our families, we probably have a situation where you can go back and think about something like this. It's just got to be the appropriate, the appropriate people that have to handle something like that. And remember, it's in conjunction with the city of Casper. And we also got to remember these other four, three cities around here are not cities, but Evansville, Mills and, not Powder River. What am I trying to think? The one up north.
Barnum.
Barnum, Barnum, I couldn't think of Barnum. But anyway, just so that money ends up with the appropriate people and do the best for everybody.
Okay, we are doing another long-form question, and that is, and it goes to Mr. Petolio. Considering the ownership dispute with County Road 505, what is your position on ensuring county ownership over the roads the county maintains?
The county needs to clearly go back through all its records and get these cleaned up. As it relates to Circle Drive, that is a county road. It has been for 100 years. The county has maintained it, has improved it, and that was access for all its citizens. It's a fire access or emergency access. You can't close that road. I understand that the owner moved in and, or the new owners have looked at it and said there isn't one. Well, prescriptive easement, if there ever is one that applies, this is clearly it. But it's a challenge. There are, all along Casper Mountain on top, there's all of these similar type roads that have been used by the public for years. They're going to get closed off because they were never properly filed. So I think it's not just one, but a tremendous number, especially around the mountain.
I think 505, you know, absolutely is a county road. The county has spent a lot of taxpayer money maintaining that and keeping it open. There's a lot of services that likely have heard are dependent upon that road. This issue is particularly of interest because many years back, when Coates Road was redone, the county came to us and asked us to basically sign over a portion of the road that was owned by the Coates Ranch. You know, we looked at it and we said, you know, we use this road, our neighbors use this road. And, you know, we felt like being good neighbors was more important than, you know, our property. I think that maintaining that opening to that, especially with 505 and being a good neighbor, is the most important thing here and to be good neighbors as far as the county commission may have some adverse possession. Thank you.
So I guess it's a county road, but I guess we don't know it's a county road, but it's been a road, since before roads were roads. It, I have a lot to say about this, but I won't. I just think it, it's a road and those people want to, I don't even know what to say. I mean, the whole thing is just a mess. And the people that move in here when they do these kind of things, seeing it in Saratoga a lot, they close roads, don't let people go up there and it's just not, it's not good. If you want to be that way, there's a state south go there.
So the current county commission, I believe, believes that it is owned by the gentleman. If they thought it was just a county road and they thought it was that simple, I mean, there is no record of ownership. Although we have used it forever, it, that doesn't necessarily make it a county road. Although through adverse possession and eminent domain, this gentleman needs, it needs to go to court and we need to pay him fair market value for the road and then establish it as a Natrona County road in perpetuity.
It is a county road. I believe it has been a county road for 100 years. It's been numbered, it's been maintained, and a prescriptive easement does not require adverse possession from the county. So that means that we have used that road for at least 10 years continuously. The previous landowner has, did, did know about that and was aware of that. And unfortunately, so many of the places around the county and around the state, you use the handshake method. It wasn't a problem because you said, "Okay, this is fine. You put the county road right there and we're going to take care of it." And we did. There's also some statutes in there that are prior to 1949 that you weren't even required to have easements filed. So there are some things that need to be looked at as far as the exemptions factor go. But I do believe it's a county road. I do believe that we need to get records of everything in the county and work through that and make sure we have all the titles claimed.
So I grew up in Story and Sheridan and saw this kind of a thing time and time again with trails, historical trails, people moving in, buying the land and wanting to close down access to the public. I think the public needs to access public land. It's their land. And when these people move in and want to deny or restrict the public, corner crossings is another thing that's kind of getting close to this, don't rely on public resources, fire prevention and all those kind of things if you want to be like that. I think we need to broaden how much access people have to the public and as far as I see, I've been following this, it is a public road. It has been serviced and maintained as such.
There's an old saying, "Keep public lands in public hands." And I guess it's been a public road from what I understand, what the press says and everything. So, you know, like it's been said, back in the old days, things were just done by slap on the back and agreements, but no, if the county's been taking care of it this long, for 40 years or so, the gentleman, it's going to cost the county money now. I understand we had to hire some attorneys to look into that or at least one attorney. So, but no, I say it's a, it's a public road, let's keep it a public road. And there should be a committee. If I get in, that's the first thing I'm going to do is try to get the county commissioner to look at all these little roads up there and, you know, get a committee together to check them out because we don't want to go through this situation every couple of years or every year or whatever. Thank you.
I haven't actually heard where these people are from, but I'm going to say they're not from Wyoming or anything like it. I understand their issue with people disrespecting the property. You see it everywhere you go. Doesn't matter what public property you're talking about. Some people just have zero respect for the ground. Maybe they can learn something by almost losing it. As far as it being a county road, I mentioned that I grew up here, been here all my life and I don't ever remember it not being a county road. The other side of it is, I've never seen any property sold to anyone that did not have an easement. Was this one properly filed, et cetera? Maybe not. There's still an easement. I don't believe the property owners have any grounds to close us off from using that road. Thank you.
Okay, next question, it's going to be short form, so 30 seconds, and this is for Mr. Coates. What would you do as a county commissioner to encourage people to join the citizen boards and how would you ensure that these boards represent all of the voices of Natrona County?
So I think to get people to be on citizen boards, I think you have to make more, more people aware that citizen boards exist. You know, there's, there's a lot of times that you see these boards, you know, filled with, you know, the same people over and over again. And so I really think it's just a matter of notification and, you know, filling the right people with those. I think it's, you know, I think the county commission does a good job with that, the interview process and, you know, come state your case. Thank you.
So, yeah, I guess, like advertisement to know that these boards are out there. Do we really need all these boards? Maybe we do, maybe we don't. Gen X, I'm a Gen Xer. We didn't want to be any part of this political thing and now we are. But there's a lot of people that don't want to get involved and it seems like they're starting to, so I think maybe just have it on the internet or something. It's hard, I didn't even know there was like hospital board and all these other boards that you can get involved in, but it, it just needs to get out there a little more.
Well, certainly some boards are more popular than others, but yeah, I think it's just a question of advertising it, posting it on the county website, and letting people know that it's out there. You're, you're going to get a lot of interest for some, and, and some you may not get that much interest.
That's a good question because this time around, and this is the first time that I remember ever happening, but we actually had six very qualified people apply for the library board this year, and the interviews were very impressive. Normally we have one or two for the positions that are open. We did have a lot of people that applied for those boards this year, but I do think that they're, that we need to advertise that a little better. We need to go through Oil City News or some of the other sources to get that information out so people actually understand what boards are out there and what's available, and how they can participate.
I like this one because I've been trying to get people involved in the county commission for the last two years. And I think there's a lot of apathy that's been created intentionally by our government in a lot of ways. So I think by allowing public comment on issues pertaining to the money that's being spent, just getting the people involved, and when they do turn out, listen to them, and don't go against the people, hear, hear what they have to say, utilize them as a resource, I think that will be huge in getting participation.
When I was a county commissioner, one, one Tuesday evening, we all got in one car and we drove up to Midwest, and we had a meeting up there. And it was a good meeting. And I think the county commissioners, it was to who they'll, and they'll get out and about every once in a while and have these meetings over in, in Mills and Evansville and whatever. And I do know the county has been advertising in the paper recently, the boards. So just mainly talking and visiting and letting them know that there's a board meeting, a board open.
I have to agree that the general public does, is not aware of the huge volume of boards and board positions that are available and they're necessary to help the commissioners get these jobs done. There's only five of them, and the, it's unbelievable the number of boards that are out there and, and need to be filled. As far as improving it, public service announcements involving TV, radio, everybody's social media these days. Thank you very much.
I, I'd be quite frank, I think the real challenge is people don't want to be on boards unless they're interested in them. Library, have a great following for the library, you'll get good candidates. There are other boards out there and nobody wants, wants to be on. They don't do anything, I don't, I don't have anything to do with them. The challenge is, is getting good people, and a lot of that is talking amongst people when they come out and go, I just really am interested in what you guys are doing. Encourage them. What are you interested in? Hey, we have these boards. Advertising doesn't seem to work.
Okay, we're going to start with Mr. Yenberg. This is going to be a short form question. Let's say you're traveling outside of your community. How would you describe Natrona County, or what would you tell people about the county that you come from?
Okay, so I was never a big fan of Casper or Natrona County, but my wife has always lived here her whole life. It is a great community. That mountain is amazing. It goes, it goes north and south instead of east, or east and west instead of north and south, and that doesn't always happen if you look at geography. I think there's a lot of potential for Casper, but we've got to get different people in here. We need fresh, new blood in there, not the old blood that's been in Casper, and make it a lot better. Spend our money better.
I guess I'm the old blood. I've been here my whole life. I'm born in Cody and I've been in Casper more than fifty years, and I'll leave. Yeah, sorry, my bad. Yeah. I, look, I, I tell them about the mountain, I tell them about our recreation, I tell them about the times we take our boat to the lake and we pull the kids around on a tube. I, I tell them, well, yesterday morning I was walking along the river with my wife. It's, it's a good restaurants, it's good schools, it's a wonderful place to raise a family. We've got eight kids and they're all successful, and it's just an amazing place to live.
It all depends on who I'm talking to. If I'm at the shot show, I'm trying to recruit new manufacturers and, and everything to come here and start with their businesses. If I'm talking to a sportsman, I talk to him about how the hunting is, how great it is. If I'm talking to a, a mountain bike rider, I talk to him about the trails that we have and the other things that we have. So it, it just depends on who you're talking to as far as what message you want to present. But the biggest thing I tell them is Casper is nothing but a, Natrona County is nothing but a big, small town.
I have to agree with that last statement. Being from Sheridan and Story growing up, I think Casper has some really superb attributes. There's the lake, there's the mountain, there's the, a great river that you could actually utilize. I, I tell people, I, I've tried to get some of my friends to move here, and told them it's centrally located, and that's nice because you can, you can get out of here relatively easy, but it is a well-filled town. I don't foresee Casper changing in the immediate future on that.
Casper is, we're the hub of Wyoming, everybody knows that. My wife would say we need more shopping, but I say, uh-uh. I mean, what I'm saying is I don't want to spend the money and all this stuff that my wife wants to buy. But anyway, the recreation is what's important, and, and it just depends who you talk to and what they're interested in. Blue Ribbon Fishing, the mountain, the lake, whatever, the trails, the best skiing, eight miles away from the city, that's not bad. It's just a good town. Good city.
Repeat the question, please.
Sure. Let's say you're traveling outside of your community. What would you tell people in describing Natrona County?
Look around, open your eyes. You would be amazed at the variety of things you can find to do. There is no limit to the available recreation in this county. Some of the other places in the state have similar things, some of them are larger in other places. But thankfully Natrona County has a little bit of just about everything, including some that are national parks in other parts of the country. Thank you.
But I can tell you, I, I get asked this question a lot when I'm down in Denver, where do I live? I tell them very proudly, I live in Casper, Wyoming. It's the greatest place in the middle of nowhere to live. I'm four hours from everything, and that suits me just fine. I have everything I want in life here. I've raised my children here, great schools, great restaurants, great outdoors. I can't think of a better place to live.
So I tell people Natrona County is a special place that I love. It's a place that I grew up, it's a place that my, you know, kids are going to grow up. It's made of wonderful communities, and those communities are made by, made up of even better people.
Okay, this is the, the, the last and final question, or it's not actually a question, it's your opportunity to conclude with ending comments. You can discuss anything you want, you have a minute, and we'll start with Mr. Keating.
So in November, we're going to have an opportunity to vote for the six cent tax. Ultimately, this, this is the same approach we had for the fifth cent tax. The reason I'm sitting here today again is because people are threatened. I mean, the inflation has gone up twenty percent in the last three years. I mean, a gallon of milk is costing you twice what it did before. We, we've got so many people in, here in Natrona County, and it's our responsibility as, as a commission to do what we can to help them out. Legislature has given us the ability to, to make, to make that change, and we, we need to do just exactly that. People like my mom and, and others. And I, so I, I would just reference Harshman's House Bill 203, which I would replace the fifth and sixth cent tax with the two, two, two percent sales tax in lieu of property tax up to a million dollars of value. It does away ultimately with a threat of losing your home if you can't afford to pay your property tax. I think that's essential.
I actually supported that last year, and I worked a lot with our legislators for property tax reform, and that was one of the things that I, that I did like because it's a use tax and not something that you, you know, if you don't have the money, then you don't pay the tax. So I ran after I'd had my career. I waited until after I had finished my career and was kind of semi-retired before I, I ran for the commission because I wanted to be able to dedicate the time that I needed to for the commission and for the community. I think it's important that the people that are on the committee, on the commission, need to, need to be there to support the community, to support our citizens, and not for personal gain. And that's the reason why I ran. It's, it costs me money, honestly, to be on the commission because if you look at the amount of time that you spend and what you do, the phone calls and everything else, it's not a moneymaker.
I like to use this time to educate the people irregardless of whether I have anybody's vote or not, there's some things you can do for yourself. I do strongly support reducing property taxes. Property, we, we keep talking about how to keep youth in, in Natrona County and in Wyoming as a whole. Well, what incentive is there for children to buy and to fix up, to invest in a property if they're going to get taxed out? So on the ballot, you are going to see a fourth separate class constitutional amendment. My advice is to vote no. It separates commercial from residential. It will increase the state level of assessment on the commercial, and for residential, it'll do no good when in the neighborhood adjustment factor of a property tax profile, they adjust that up. The seniors, I strongly support seniors, but asking for a special district at this juncture is going to increase property taxes, and state statute allows for a second mill to be taken. Thank you.
There's one nice thing about it, talking about the, the seniors and all that is, I'm not a senior. No, I'm just joking. But one thing, we, we have the right to vote on it, and that's what's important. Everybody has a right to vote on it. And I, I just want everybody to know that I was not a county commissioner when they voted to sell the hospital off. I think that's very important because a lot of people are talking about the hospital. And this is nothing against the employees, they're good dedicated employees of the hospital, but I mean, it's just a corporation that people seem to be griping about. And this is a great city. We have several towns around us, and I'm very proud to be part of Casper. Like I said, we, all nine of us kids were raised here in Casper, my folks had a business here in Casper. And everybody's against paying more taxes, and especially property taxes. We all want them to come down.
I guess I'd just like to say that I am actually doing this specifically for all of the county employees. No one in particular is more important than any other. Sadly, someone's going to be unhappy with every decision because that's just how it The sixth cent, the only thing I really have against that is as county residents that are not part of the city, you don't have an opportunity to vote on that, and I think that's wrong. Property taxes, I think, should be assessed based on purchase price. I think that would be fair for everyone. And if you paid too much for it, sadly, the people down the road that buy after, buy it from you are going to be stuck with that, but at least the people that bought their homes forty years ago are not going to get jabbed because you paid too much for your house. Thank you for your participation. Thank you for being here.
Well, I, I'd probably start off by saying, I agree with a lot of what's been said and disagree with some, and that comes from having a lot of knowledge from years of doing, either working at this, or working in the city council or, you know, on the county commission. There are a lot of things that are going on that you just simply can't say yes or no to. You have, they're very complex issues. It takes a lot of time and effort to develop relationships with your fellow elects in the county, your, in your municipalities, and at the state level. And the one thing that we're lacking, and it's getting worse, is civility. And I am very proud, you can go back in my twenties plus, twenty-two plus years, you'll find that I always preach, it's the issue, it's not the person. And we're sadly missing that, and it's getting worse in Wyoming, and you can clearly see it across the United States.
You know, I love talking to all the candidates and hearing all the candidates because I learned something from each and every one of them every time I talked to them. You know, I want to be your commissioner. I want to be your commissioner because as we talked about the role of government earlier, because I want to support your abilities to live a great life in Natrona County and to be able to, you know, propagate toward the future. I want to use my education, my experience, to make things better in the county and to provide leadership for the county. Thank you.
So I would rather listen than talk. I'm a pretty shy guy. I don't say too much, and sometimes when I do, I have a lot of rust and a lot of edges from being in the coal mine for twenty years. It's tough. This is a tough world. Casper is a good place. We have amazing schools. There are some teachers up here that are incredible. We have good people in this community. We have some bad, but I think all in all, it's worth fighting for, getting the government out of our lives and being people from Wyoming.
Okay, we'd sure like to thank the candidates tonight and appreciate everything that, that they said. We just had a, a couple of dates, and maybe I'm stealing Kylie's thunder.
No, that's all right.
Okay. So July twenty-third is when early voting starts, and then the, the primary is on August twentieth, the general on November fifteenth. Just highly encourage you to go to Vote411 and to get more information about candidates.
Thank you so much, and that's, that's exactly what I was up here to say is that we're, I, I would just want to thank the candidates for coming out tonight and thank you for participating. It takes, it takes people who are willing to put themselves out there and run in order for voters to have a choice. And I want to thank everybody here tonight for being engaged and showing up, and everybody on YouTube who's watching this forum for being an informed voter, and definitely check out vote411.org to check out all of these candidates. If there's any issue that we didn't cover tonight or that you want to know more, I believe that they have their contact information up on Vote411, and so you can definitely contact the candidates and ask your questions directly to them as well. So thank you so much for being here this evening, and thank you to our moderators and the library as well.